School district. Today is Monday, November 8th, 2016, and the time is 6:30 PM. Following the presentation of the 2015-16 World's Best Workforce and the plans for the upcoming school year by the district's director of teaching and learning, Mary Grace Hansen, and the district's assessment coordinator, Hope Langston, there will be an opportunity for community feedback. I'd like to remind board members that this is an opportunity for residents of the Northfield District to provide feedback to the district. As board members, we will have the opportunity to ask questions and provide comments during tonight's regular school board meeting following this public hearing. So, we thank Mary Grace and Hope for being here, and look forward to your presentation.
Well, thank you for your time this evening. As you know, this meeting and report are required by statute in Minnesota, and a report is due to MDE by December 15th. And then, this report, PowerPoint, and the written report to MDE will all be published on our website very shortly. So, Hope Langston, our district assessment coordinator, and I will present the meeting, the report, and we will go through the World's Best Workforce. We will try to do the acronyms as they come up. So, this is just a brief history of the World's Best Workforce. It was required the first time in 2014, and this is, of course, the 2016 report for the last school session. Some of the changes that were put into place this year were a gifted and talented portion. MDE has not come out with requirements or report form for that. And the other legislative requirement is about teacher training and qualifications and experience. That was included in your memorandum in your board report. There is not a place on the template to report that to MDE, so it's not really included in this report, but we wanted you to have that information as long as that's part of the requirements. The rest of the requirements, of course, we will meet as they come up through legislation. ESSA may not change this because this is a Minnesota requirement, so we'll have to wait and see on that. There are five goals, again, very similar. Part of the objective of this report is to have some consistency. So, the first required goal is all children are ready for school. The Northfield goal was 75% of incoming kindergarten students will be academically and behaviorally ready for kindergarten. And the results. In the fall, we had 81% of our incoming students ready in reading and 79% in math. And you can see, we put a gold star for meeting that goal. The behavior results are not listed in this because MDE dropped the social, academic, emotional behavior risk screener from their pilot that we are a part of. But we got a hold of the copy of it, and we're able to do it through Google, and the teachers just had to finish that by last Wednesday, so we do not have the results of that yet. But we will be having those results soon.
So, as you can see, the black line is our goal line, which would be 75%. We're looking for kids coming in at low risk or some risk, because FAST and their research supports the some-risk students being served in the classroom with typical differentiation instruction. And so, as you can see, for all students, our white students in our non-FRP male and female breakdown, we are hitting that mark. Where we are not hitting that mark is FRP and students of color. I am giving you disaggregated data this year, just in alignment with Northfield Promise, so you will see every graph disaggregated. And there's a lot of graphs. That's the reading results. Math, same situation. So, we know that our challenged student groups of FRP and students of color are coming in with a gap before they even walk in our doors. So, we now have two years' worth of FAST data. Again, it's nice to have some of the consistency. I just want to point out that you're going to see subtle change, about a 5% change in reading. Results this year, the low risk stayed relatively stable, but we saw a shift in the some risk and high risk. You do see a larger change in math, and the reason for that, I believe, can be attributed to the timing of the assessment this year. We gave the math FAST assessment at Ready, Set, Go, so literally, this child's first visit in the classroom. Last year, their math assessment was given in about early October, so I think that accounts for some of the difference. We're going to relook at that. We consciously chose not to do reading at Ready, Set, Go day on the advice of the teachers, but we will revisit timing again for the third year.
So, our goal for next year remains that 80 -- well, is up to 80% of incoming students will be ready. And our action steps, we will continue with the FAST assessment. This year, we will be doing it three times during the year. FAST stands for Formative Assessment System for Teachers, and it has reading, math, and then we've pulled the behavior out, and we'll do the behavior separately. Northfield Promise is very tightly aligned with this work in kindergarten and kindergarten readiness, both in the reading team and the Ready for K team, so we will keep working with them. And as part of that, we've had regular meetings with kindergarten teachers and preschool teachers, including this fall, going to an alignment session in Rochester. And the Northfield Promise is currently, in partnership with the school district, doing a study of preschool experience, and which experience, and how much preschool experience children have had. Goal two is all third graders can read at grade level. The goal was that Northfield School District will increase third-grade reading MCA proficiency by 10.3%.
Can I speak to that goal?
Mm-hmm.
So, if you recall from last year, the MDE had set 2017 targets for us, both in proficiency levels and in achievement gap targets. So, our goals for the World's Best Workforce were aligned to those targets. 2017 is coming, right around the corner, actually, for the testing season, and you're going to see when we go through some later slides, some context for how many districts have been able to meet their MDE targets. I'm going to give you a little bit of foreshadowing, not many. So, we actually met with Matt, talked about the strategic plan, and how we could better align the World's Best Workforce with the new strategic plan, so you're going to see some deviation from these MDE target goals this year, which probably will be changing under ESSA as well.
You want that one?
Sure.
So, the third-grade reading proficiency fell from 61.7% to 59.6%, the fourth year of decline since the standards changed in 2012.
So, again, disaggregated data for the 2016 results. You can see all students over on the left, and then our challenged subgroups over on the right. The red bar would be where the state average lies for that particular student group, and as you can see, we are just above the state average for all students, actually below for white students, and below for free and reduced Hispanic, above for English learners in special education. These are the student demographic trends over the last five years. I would just point your attention to the EL performance down at the bottom, which has had a nice increase over the last three years, and kudos to the EL team and the teachers at work for them, because that's a group that is tough to move to proficiency in third grade, and that's a nice increase for them. So, here we go with context. What the MDE provides us with is called the Region 10 File, and that would be districts that are in our geographic region, not necessarily our demographic peers. But this is what they provide us to give us some context for our results. And as we move through these for each of the World's Best Workforce goals, I want you to just think about that, where the line, the intersection of the maroon and the gold, that line is essentially where Northfield falls. Okay? So, those are actual district counts. You're going to see a variation in the total, because they will only report cell sizes that are a certain level. And so, you'll see that, for instance, all students were up to 57 in our region in 2016, FRP students. We increased our standing in the region. That's because most people's FRP percentage dropped. So, you can raise your standing in the region whether your proficiency rate goes up relative to everybody else's, or everybody else's falls relative to yours. Then, where we fall in terms of white students and our Hispanic students. Again, very few districts in our region have Hispanic students, 10 total, with a cell count that was large enough. It is what it is. It's an interesting way to look at where we fall in our region, strengths in some areas, challenges in others. Another thing I discovered in my second year is DAC. There's a thing called a media file. It only exists on the MDE site for a very short period of time, but it gives some really interesting context for us in the state as a whole. So, this same line, the intersection of the maroon and the gold, is where we fall in third grade for, over on the left, the total number of districts with third-grade test takers with cell sizes larger than nine, and then each of the schools within the number of third-grade schools in our state. You can see, we're pretty much in the middle as a district, and we vary between the three elementary schools for this 2016 school year. I wish I had known that this file existed in my first year of DAC, because I would have nabbed it when it came out, but it is something that I thought was really useful, and that's essentially what they give to the press every year. I can't see my number, so I wanted to make sure that I haven't missed anything for you. Okay. So, total number of districts for grade three in the state is 417. The number of schools with a grade-three cell size large enough to count is 857.
So, we changed our goal a little bit, since we don't know where the targets will be, and we made it much more student-oriented, with 80% of Northfield third graders will meet or exceed grade-level standards on the MCA. And one thing we failed to point out before this is you can see that on the bottom of there, we have put where it aligns with the district strategic plan. Our action steps, we will continue working with Northfield Promise. We do have the literacy grant for fidelity of implementation of our Tier One reading, and in fact, this week, we start our second round of meetings. We've had the first round where we completed the inventory, and this week and next week, we start examining the results and the data garnered from those inventories. So, that's the data on instructional practices. We will develop action plans based on the data from those inventories, and we're also, as a result of the Carleton Study, going to begin researching some peer schools. There are several steps involved with that. The first one, getting the final report from Carleton, and then examining their data and their test scores, and of course, asking what they do for those that are having high Goal three is about closing the opportunity gap, and it says all racial and economic achievement gaps between students are closed. Northfield School District will decrease the free and reduced lunch, English language learners, and Hispanic math proficiency gaps by 3% and reading proficiency gaps by 6%. The proficiency gap for Hispanics decreased by 3.7%, and all of the others were flat.
So, what you're looking at is the size of the gap for 2015 in the gold, 2016 in the maroon, and the state average for 2016 in the beige. So, you can see that our Hispanic gap did drop. That was a combination of their proficiency rate slightly rising and the white proficiency rate dropping. It continues to be a subgroup that we struggle with, especially in terms of trying to reach that state average. What we do know is that a higher percentage of our Hispanic students are REL students compared to the state Hispanic population as a whole, so that plays into that number being tough to budge. So, those are our gap sizes. These would be the five-year trends for each of those challenged groups. Again, when you're looking at gap size, a downward trend is beneficial and where we want to head. So, we do see that, you know, a downward trend since the standards changed in 2013 for our Hispanic gap. This one's pretty interesting. So, in Region 10, this is where we lie again, and these would be just the target scores. So, the MDE says, hey, here's where we say you should be in 2016, here's where you are, the difference is that target score. And so, you can see where we fall in Region 10. What the interesting context for me was, in Region 10, only 13 districts made their reading targets for the FRP subgroup, six made it for the Hispanic subgroup, two made it for LEP, six made it for SPED, and only three districts in our region made their target score for white students. We didn't hit our target scores in those areas, but many, many other districts are not either. So, again, it just gives some context to the goal itself and the target score itself. Same thing in math. These are the gaps for 2015 and 16 for math MCA results. The upward trend, not where we want to head, but what we have seen, the standards for math changed in 2011, so all of the data points you're seeing on this graph are post-standards Same situation in the region for math targets for achievement gaps. 16 districts made it for FRP, so they hit their target score for 2016. Six made it for Hispanic. No districts in the region made their math target score for LEP students. Six made it for SPED, and five made it for white students, so slightly better than reading.
So, our goal, again, changed a little bit, that the Northfield School District will exceed the state reading and math averages for on-track students in the Hispanic, FRP, LEP, and SPED student groups.
And on-track students are a measure that MDE uses. I kind of like it. It includes proficient students who make medium and high growth, and it includes non-proficient students who make high growth. And I feel like that is going to be a better measure for us than these target scores, which really, in the context of all the districts in the state, don't carry much meaning for us anymore. So, that's why we switched to this goal.
So, our action steps include continuing the ADSIS program. We've upgraded our elementary math series to Everyday Math 4. We're forming literacy teams, and like I said, they'll be meeting this week and next week. Again, we are working very closely with Northfield Promise and the Carleton Peer Study Group. Goal four is all students are ready for career and college. And our goal for last year was Northfield School District will increase the eighth-grade MCA proficiency rate by 6% in math and 9% in reading. And the reason those were chosen, actually, MDE suggests we use the eighth-grade math proficiency score as an indicator of this. The grade-eight reading proficiency increased 1.7%, and the math proficiency fell 3.3%.
So, here you see the grade-eight reading results, again, in the context of the state average and disaggregated. Pretty decent results for our FRP population for that cohort and our English language Again, our cohorts in our challenged groups are small-sized, and in any given year, they can fluctuate pretty dramatically, depending on the cohort size and the cohort results. There's our trends for eighth-grade proficiency rates by student group. And here's the media file. This one's fascinating. So, when I think about our proficiency rate of 67%, I think we could get a little bit better. In the state, 82.4% of districts had lower proficiency rates than we did. So, again, it provides some context, and if you just look at proficiency alone, and you think about proficiency the way we think about grading, and you think about 67%, that's not where we want to be. However, in the larger context of the state, there's very few districts actually with much higher proficiency rates. They're out there, and that's not to say we don't want to continuously improve, but I think this gives us some picture about the state as a whole and the MCA tests as a whole. So, again, just an interesting piece of information for the larger picture. Math results for grade eight, 2016, again, by student group. And again, you can see the difference in a cohort, because you see a much different EL response in math than you did in reading. Not sure where to go with that one. We're working with the team. Math trends, obviously trending downward. That's something that that team is really working hard on. I've met with the math PLC team at the middle school many times. They are an incredible group of people who are really working hard to try and turn this trend around. There's our Region 10 context for grade-eight math. Again, we have that for math, not for reading, because the MDE says that grade-eight math is your college and career readiness indicator. So, they provide the data for math, they don't provide it for reading. Although, I bet Fritz could dig it up for us. White students and Hispanic students. And here's the state context for math. So, again, our pass rate of 65% landed us at 71.4% in the state. So, 71.4% of districts had proficiency rates that were at or below Northfield's in eighth-grade
We chose another indicator for college and career readiness, and that's the results of the ACT. And we chose that we would increase the college-ready composite benchmark by 6%. And the percent remained unchanged from 2015 to 2016.
There, you're just seeing the breakdown. One of the things that I've worked with the high school PLCs on is looking at those kids who are one or two points within the college readiness benchmark, and that's been really fun to get to work with, a team that's excited to think about and has done some action research on how to move those kids. There, you can see, pretty stable results from 15 -- between 15 and 16. I wanted to put this graph in there. In the summer, we get the glossy ACT report. This is a little bit different, because it's going by graduating class year, so it's kind of like graduation rates, it's one year behind. So, this is the graduating class of 2016, so last year's seniors. They were the first and only cohort of students in our state that were required to take the ACT, because if you recall, that was a graduation requirement for that class only. Following that class, it is now just a requirement that we offer the ACT. It's not a requirement that they take it. So, interestingly enough, and I think this is pretty powerful, if you look at that average ACT score between 15 and 16, you're going to see a pretty massive drop at the state level, but you're not going to see very much of a drop at the district level, nor at the national level. So, our rate actually fell from 23.3 to 22.9, where the state fell from 22.7 to 21.1. So, because we have had historically high participation rates, we did not experience the same hit to our average score that other districts in the state did.
And we included a third goal, which was 85% or more of Northfield students will score three or higher on the Advanced Placement Exam. And we have 87% of our students who reached that target, and so we have another gold And you can see here that Northfield consistently and very emphatically outscores both the state and the global average on the results of the AP exams. And we had, how many students? I can't read that. 218 students take the exam, and the number of exams was 394. So, we've rewritten the goals. Again, we want 80% of our eighth graders to be proficient on the MCAs. We want the percentage of college-ready on the ACT benchmark to be increased by 6%, and we would like 87% of our students scoring three or higher on their AP exams. And again, we have ADSIS and MTSS, both at the middle school and high school. The Northfield Promise Career and College Ready Action Team is quite active and doing a lot of good things to help promote career and college readiness, and we will have Naviance and other ACT prep and coursework available for the students in the high school, and we will continue doing what we're doing in our AP courses. Goal five is all students graduate from high school. Northfield District will maintain or exceed a 90% graduation rate. And again, we had a 93% for all of Northfield School District and a 97% at the high school, which is quite an achievement, so another gold star.
I know this has gotten a lot of press, and we're about at the end of our time, but as you can see, and I know you're well aware, that the graduation rates have improved dramatically over the past 10 years. Great news for all student groups. And then, I just wanted to put in Northfield High Schools as well, because it gets lost sometimes in that district, in the district data, but their results, as you can see in that last column, 2015, to have those kind of graduation rates for challenged student groups is incredible. The Region 10 context, interestingly enough, we look good, and everybody's pretty successful with their graduation rates, which is why we kind of fall in the middle there. A decimal, a tenth of a decimal point can separate you.
So, in the spirit of continuous improvement, we'd like to raise that to 95, our graduation rate to 95%, and we will continue with, obviously, the successful practices, Torch, MTSS, Academy, and seminar programs. So, to summarize, we have several bright spots, the graduation rate, the kindergarten readiness, the AP test performance, the Hispanic reading achievement gap trend, which is going up, and, or the gap is going down, the achievement's going up, and the grade-three EL English learners' reading performance trend. We have some growth opportunities, again, in the spirit of continuous improvement, the grade-three reading proficiency, and the achievement and opportunity gaps that exist between our students. So, I don't believe we have time for questions now.
Actually, if that includes, uh, concludes...
Actually, if that concludes your presentation, because this is a public hearing, we would have any community members who wish to come forward. The board will have an opportunity to ask questions during the regular, our regular board meeting. So, are there any community members who wish to comment or any clarifying questions on the World's Best Workforce public hearing? Okay. So, seeing no one come forward, I ask for a motion to adjourn. Moved by Jeff. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Ellen. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We are adjourned.